Good evening. I would like to call the September 12, 2016 Belbrook City Council Meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood's absent. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here. Forrest is not here. Forrest is out of the country. May I have a motion to excuse Forrest?
I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. Greenwood tonight.
Ma'am.
Motion by Mr. Edwards to excuse Mr. Greenwood, seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on. Formal approval of the City Council regular meeting minutes of August 8, 2016, and special meeting minutes of August 16, August 17, and August 22. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular City Council meeting minutes of our last meetings? Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements and special guests. We have too few things going on. One thing that was not on the agenda, we have a proclamation tonight. It's a proclamation, this is Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Cancer affects a lot of our friends' lives, I know. Just last night, Brenda Lewis, who was Executive Chair of Green County Central Committee and also on State Center Committee, passed away. She was very involved in numerous things throughout the county. Her son is Ron Lewis, who is our prosecutor, very well-known, so I'd like to send her family and friends best wishes and condolences to them. And she eventually passed away from complications of cancer, not prostate cancer, of course, but of cancer. Prostate Cancer Awareness Month is September 2, 2016, whereas in Ohio, it's estimated that 6,780 men will be diagnosed and 1,870 will die from the disease in 2016. Whereas, there are 3 million prostate cancer patients and survivors fighting their personal battles every day. And whereas, veterans are 1.5 times more likely to get prostate cancer. And whereas, prostate cancer is the most commonly diagnosed form of cancer and the second-leading cause of cancer-related deaths among men. Whereas, this year approximately 180,890 men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in the United States alone. Whereas, education regarding prostate cancer and early detection strategies is critical to saving lives and preserving and protecting our families. And whereas, all men are at risk for prostate cancer, and we encourage the citizens of Belbrook to increase the importance of prostate screening. So, I'd like to thank them for getting in contact with us, and everyone please keep that in their minds. Moving on, we will first start with Nikki Cousins, and I know what she's gonna be talking about tonight.[212.54][212.54](Laughter). I'm pretty sure I know the outcome of it. So, she's the coach for the high school cheerleaders, I assume?
Yes.
Yeah.
My name is Nikki Cousins, and I am an assistant high school cheer coach, and I also help direct the Belbrook Eagle Cheer Program. So, I'm very involved with all the cheerleading in the community. I'm just here tonight to ask for permission to decorate the town of Belbrook, the city of Belbrook. We'd like to hang our foil streamers up around town, around trees, anything like that. Of course, I know no street signs or anything like that, and we would be taking them back down by November 1. We'd send our girls out, and we'd remove everything that we had put up.
Utility poles, Donna? This is usually where you say?
Okay. Yep, that's okay.
It is, okay.
Okay. So, utility poles, trees?
I think the biggest issue we always have is just make sure, do the best job you can on cleaning them up after the season's over.
Sure.
So, do I need to make any kind of formal motions?
No, we look back. We've never done it.
Okay.
It was just more of an approval and make sure they understand to get them back down.
And sorry we missed the first game.
Yeah.
First televised game.
Yes, it was very exciting, except for the rain. But, it was wet, but it was fun.
Okay, well, I think we're all in agreement.
Okay. And one more question.
Okay.
Is this something we have to do yearly, or is this something we could agree on for a certain time period?
Historically, I mean, they've come every year, but that's up to really council.
I actually think it's probably better just to contact us early. It's sort of good to be able to get it out there, so people know what's going on, so we wouldn't get calls saying, not that everyone's going to read the minutes of the meetings or watch this meeting, or, I don't know, there will be no newsletters going out probably in the meantime, but it just brings it out that we are doing it, and people know about it, and they don't call and complain probably quite as much.
Okay.
That'd be my take.
As far as utility poles, we're not supposed to attach anything to utility poles. It's actually a Ohio Administrative Code requirement, but we always allow it for the limited purpose of being celebratory, so, as long as it's taken down later. Okay. Got it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nikki. Next, we have Bronn Wilson. I don't know, how many years have we done this, Bronn?
I don't know, a long time. I think it might be, it might be close to 30.
Wow. Bronn is here to introduce the Beautification Award Winners for 2016. She'll tell you a little bit about how they're selected, and I know we've got, it looks like one, two, three, four, at least five here, six here tonight.
I think so, hopefully.
Maybe more.
The beautification awards are, they're just really based on homes that stand out in Belbrook, homes that are aesthetically pleasing to the eye, they have a visible house number, they're in a good state of repair, no peel and paint, you know, not weedy or overgrown. And there's a committee of, I don't even, several people this year. I'm thinking we might have six or seven this year. And they have a section, and they'll drive around, and they'll pick several homes from that section, and they mail it back to, email it back to me, and then the whole committee will go out, and we will vote on those sections, and vote on two in each of those sections. Sometimes we also have nominations from residents, and they'll email me or call me, and I'll put those on the list. Sometimes they're part of the original list. But, it's a unanimous vote. Almost everybody on the committee have been previous winners, so their homes have all, you know, won an award in the past, and you are not eligible to win an award if you're on the committee. So, basically, that's it. And people volunteer, and we've had people on the committee for a long time, and it's kind of a neat thing to do, to see what your neighbors' homes look like, and just how beautiful Belbrook really is, and how much hard work everybody puts into it. So, that's about it. And then, Bob, if you want to come down and shake hands with everybody as they come up?
Absolutely.
And then also, when we call your name, then you get to select from one of the beautiful stones that are engraved, "Belbrook Beautification Award Winners for 2016," and I think, is this the fourth or fifth year that we've done the?
At least the fourth.
Yeah.
I think that was Mark's idea, and I love it, and everybody loves getting these stones. They're just beautiful, and in fact, previous winners that didn't get stones, they want stones.[494.90][494.90](Laughter). But, they're just, they're really neat, and it's neat to see them around town and see them in people's yards. I really love them. And, so I guess that's it, so we can present the awards. The first award, and then this shows the photos of their homes as well. This is the Spicers, and they're at 4394 Hillcrest Drive, and they are not here this evening, but they've been there, I think, 30 years, her son said, so, but, you know, just a nice property, nice window boxes, and she was out of town, so I didn't get to meet her, but we will, and we'll also drop off all the rocks that, if people aren't here to accept them. And then, the, in that same area A, is the second winner, is Richard and Sharon Cost, and they're at 2226 Tampico Trail. If you'd like to come up, Richard and Sharon, and shake hands with the bear, and pick out a fabulous rock.
Right now, we're strewn for it.
Just a rock's throw, right?
Yeah, but not that rock. Congratulations, those people.
It does, it's really, yeah, very nice, so you really do. You can be first, you get first pick. And then, in Area B, and the city is divided into five areas, so A, B, C, D, E, and this is on Ivy Crest, 2200 Ivy Crest, and it's Tom and Kathy Adams.
I'd be a little here today. And I couldn't make me think of anyone. Right, ladies, thank you so much.
Nice to see you again. You're very welcome, Tom. So, come on up and pick a?
You're a good crap out of me, what?
I know, I'm sorry.[594.16][594.16](Laughter). I mean, sometimes people are like, nodding answering the door, looking out the window, but anyway, but eventually, when they find out why I'm there, they're grateful, gracious. And the second home is 2089 Marcia Drive, and that is Jimmy Shepherd, and that really is a neat house, too. It has done a lot of neat things to it, it's just meticulously cared for. And we will drop off Jimmy's rock. And then, there was actually a tie. So, the third home is in Area B, and it is 2445 Tennyson Drive, and that's Kyle and Kelly Kempton. And this is?
Kyle's big enough to pick out a rock.
Very nice to meet you in person.
You too, thank you.
Congratulations.
Nice house, Kyle. He's my nephew, so I gotta be a?
Oh, is he really? Okay.
His backyard's also pretty neat looking, too.
Your mom said she won?
Yeah, they won last year.
Okay, that's great. So, it's obviously in the family that you guys, hardworking, take care of your homes, which is really nice. I mean, it just, it makes the whole city nice. And then, in Area C, we have Rob and Mary Hollister at 1692 Gary Drive, and they are here, yes. And they have won before, yes, but they didn't get a rock, because it's been longer than five years.
Oh, they're all different colors.
I know, they're really neat.
See, Kyle is where you get trouble. Raw rock.
And then, Beth and John Edgar on 1767 Kensington Drive, and this is, Kensington's a dead end, but there are really some nice homes. And this one is really neat, because there's so much shade. I mean, it would be, it would be tricky to landscape that, maybe just on a beautiful job. And they are not here, but we will drop off the rock. And then, Area D is 66 Southeast Street, and that is Brooke and Gary Berry, and they are not here, but we will drop off the rock, and it's a darling home, and I call that, is that the Old Village?
Uh-huh.
And they're cute houses, but down there, they really are, and they, a lot of people have done some very neat things. And then, 71 Brookwood, this is Michael and Debbie Alver, and they also, I mean, neat house, a lot of different landscaping.
Yeah.
And then, in Area E?
Mike's here.
Okay. Oh, there he is, okay.
Thank you.
And I saw you when you were running out, running down the driveway, I think.
Getting ready to go see my first, or my first granddaughter. I was all excited. I ran you over, I'm like?
That's okay.
I wore a previous winner, too.
I know, I know.
I found a picture, actually.
Good. How long ago was that?
Eleven?
Was it that long ago?
Yeah, I think it was about.
It's really, I mean, it really is a neat house. You guys have done a lot of neat things. And then, Area E, this is 3950 Jacob Hill, and that's Chad and Suzie McGary. And they're here. She's here. Nice to see you again. You're welcome. Congratulations. Great looking green grass. And then, the last of the homes is 4028 Sable Ridge, and that's Lisa and Dr. Craig Henry.
Very congratulations.
Nice to meet you. I called this gentleman, he was on vacation.
He's actually sitting on the beach.
Oh, that's nice. Congratulations. Beautiful home.
Thank you.
Just beautiful. And then, our last winners are for the business, and this is the Belbrook Winters Library, and the ladies that do all the work are the Belbrook Garden Club.
Good job.
May really take a picture of us for the rest of the garden.
Absolutely. Well, Bronn?
They all work so hard.
Oh, they do.
Yes, LeBron, I'll do a photo box. Which one would you like to see?
I know, a big one. Get a big one.
Then they gotta carry it.
Yeah, and they really, they do a lot of work. I know the city really helps, and they all work together as a team, and this is not, you know, a business like other businesses, but it stands out, and they've done a beautiful job. And that's it for 2016 Belbrook Beautification Awards.
Bronn, thank you very much again.
You're very welcome.
And I think also to mention the Garden Club, they do a lot more than just the Winters Library. I know they still market, but they do a lot of landscaping, the museum.
They do the containers at the center.
The containers that look beautiful here the last few weeks and months, so, thank you all for doing that, too, just getting all the beautification.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Nice to see you.
And here is the list of the other committee members in addition to Bronn.
Yes, I need to break work. These are all the other ladies and gentlemen that work so hard. Debbie Gross, Robert Guy, Johnny Harris, Bonnie Howe, Michelle Johnson, Lisa Keller, Benny Alrod, and Pat Robinson. And Pat, actually, she has been on the committee for, I think, 10 years, and these are, for the most part, all previous winners. Our newest member is Bob Guy, and I think I'm the not the oldest, but the longest.
Hey, council, anything else, Dad?
Thank you, Bronn. That's always a nice program, and I appreciate you putting the time and effort, as well as your committee members, to carry it out.
All right. So, don't feel obligated to stay. You're more than welcome. I know there's a game on, and it started 15 minutes ago, if you're a Pittsburgh Steelers fan.
They all wanna go.
An early Monday night football game, we will continue, so.
Congratulations. Yes, congratulations, everyone.
And, yeah, Nick, sorry, you gotta stay.[1008.11][1008.11](Laughter). So, I know he wants to go. Moving on, no public hearing of ordinances, no introduction of ordinances. We do have resolutions this evening. First resolution is Resolution 2016-CC. Ms. Donna Seager-Lawson?
Resolution number 2016-CC, a resolution authorizing the city manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, and to execute contracts as required. Whereas, the city of Belbrook is applying for a grant and loan to help finance the cost of a capital improvement known as the Upper Hillside Water Main Improvement Project pursuant to the programs administered by the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, and whereas the Ohio Public Works Commission is authorized to provide financial assistance for capital improvements to public infrastructure, and whereas the Upper Hillside Water Main Improvement Project is considered to be a priority need for the community and is a qualified project under the OPWC. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves Section 1 that the city manager is authorized to prepare and submit an application to the OPWC for grant funding in the amount of $600,000 and loan funding in the amount of $290,000 for the Upper Hillside Water Main Improvement Project. Section 2 that the city manager is authorized to execute any agreements as may be necessary and appropriate to obtain this grant and loan funding from OPWC. Section 3 that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes, this is a resolution, as you stated, to submit an application. We have done a preliminary application for this project, and it has scored pretty well, so we anticipate getting funding for this. But, just an overview of what this is, this is in the Upper Hillside Plat. The intent is to replace the existing water main that's over 50 years old, and it's on the low-pressure water system in Belbrook. We'd install ductile iron water main, and it would be on the high-pressure water system. We're able to do this now, since we did the water main project that came down Main Street and connected, that did a complete loop of the high-pressure water system, so now we can, we can use that. There are 113 homes back in that plat, so we would have updated service to all 113 of those homes. We convert all of the meters to outside meters. Right now, we have 40 of them that are inside the homes. They just get difficult when you need to change them, things like that, so we'd have a meter pit outside, like we do for most of the homes within the city. And then, at the end of this project, all of the streets within there would be resurfaced. So, that's the scope of the project. There's a couple of things, reasons that we're doing this. One is, this plat is the plat that has the lowest water pressure in the city, because it's on the low-pressure system, and it's elevated higher than anywhere else. Water pressure in, right now, for some of those homes is in the 30 to 40 to PSI, which is pretty low for water pressure. What we would expect out of this is, we'd be able to increase that pressure to 85 to 95 PSI, which is more typical what you'd find in the rest of the homes within the city. It would also have the purpose of increasing water pressure for firefighting back in there, it'd be on the high-pressure system. And then, it would replace that aging transite water main. That's one of our more difficult, it's more susceptible to main breaks than some of the other mains that we have, and with its age, and it's also difficult to deal with. When you get in there, it tends to be a little more temperamental than some of the other things. And then, obviously, the ability to resurface those streets with grant dollars is another added benefit to this. Just to give you a sense of what we're talking about here, so, Upper Hillside off of, upper Belbrook Main Street here coming in, we'd have water main, actually, ironically, I had to check and have the engineers check, but there's a one mile of water main in here, and you don't think that there's that much water main, but that's what drives the cost of this. So, there's a water main that will come through, it'll loop through, hit all of these cul-de-sacs. There's actually a connection back here that goes down to Streamview that feeds back this way, too, so we'll maintain that connection, but that's what the water main will do. So, what we're asking for in the application, the total cost for the project is just over $1.2 million. So, what we've asked for is $600,000 in grant, $290,000 in loan. The loan would be a 30-year, no-interest loan, so we would have, obviously, favorable turns on that, and the net cost to the water fund would be just over $300,000. So, if we can get 75% of this paid through grant funding and a loan at no interest, it obviously makes much sense to do. This is a project that will be very difficult to do. It'll have a lot of impact to the residents. Ultimately, it'll be positive impacts to the resident, but in the meantime, we're basically going to be tearing up their streets, it's gonna be a state of disrepair for a while. We talked about, because of the cost of this project, doing it in two phases, but it didn't make sense, because you'd just be tearing things up twice, and you'd have more, double the construction traffic, things like that. As we go through, we've done some very preliminary engineering, just to get the basis for these numbers. One of the, there's a lot of concerns with this project, obviously, when you increase, when you double water pressure, you know, what is that going to do to appliances, water softeners? We're gonna, we're gonna watch that very closely. With all the talk about lead in the systems and stuff like that, we want to monitor that very closely also, because really, where the lead in the systems is, are in the service lines that are from where our water main is, up to the house. That's where a lot of lead service lines are in, or that's where a lot of, even within your house, there's lead pipes or lead solder that is that, so we've gotta be very careful with that. So, when we go through the engineering, the complete engineering, that's some of the things that we're gonna be paying very close attention to, to make sure that we have everything covered that we can. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about this project.
When do we anticipate starting it, assuming we get the?
The funding would be available July 1 of 2017, so I would anticipate, we can start engineering, if we anticipate getting the funding, we can start it in 2017. This may be one that probably goes late 2017, probably into 2018 even, for construction. So, that'll all be more established by the engineers, how long they're gonna take to design this completely, and we really, this is one that we want to spend a lot of time, we'll probably have some meetings with the residents to explain what exactly we're doing, why we're doing it, what the benefits are to them, too. So, we'll probably go a little bit slower in this process, just to make sure that we're, we've got all our bases covered before we start digging in the ground.
When would we know if we get the funding?
We will officially know in November, but there is a preliminary scoring meeting in the next few weeks, but we know, we know, we're in a district that has eight counties, so there's Green County, it goes all the way to Champagne County, to Prebo County, Dark County, they're all in there, but we know in the Green County Subcommittee scoring that we have scored well enough to score high enough. So, I'm fairly confident that we will get the money, but until it's official, I won't say that.
Okay.
Obviously, without the money, we don't intend to take this project on, at least not right now.
No, no, there's no way that we could take on a $1.2 million project, so getting, I mean, a grant for 50% of that is money that we don't have to repay, and we can do this, so. It's something, we, we've talked with council here for years about replace, trying to be proactive in replacing some of this water main, and that's really what this is, and then the opportunity to get a $600,000 grant just adds to the reason to do this now.
Let's hope we get it. Good project.
Yep.
Any other questions on council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2016-CC?
May I adopt Resolution number 2016-CC?
Have a second.
I'll second.
And a roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Seager-Lawson to adopt Resolution 2016-CC, a resolution authorizing the city manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, and to execute contracts as required, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, we have one more resolution, Resolution 2016-DD. Mr. Schweller?
Yes, Mayor, Resolution 2016-DD, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Whereas, this council, in accordance with the provision of law, has previously adopted a tax budget for the next succeeding fiscal year commencing January 1, 2017. Whereas, the Budget Commission of Green County, Ohio, has certified its action thereon to this council, together with an estimate by the county auditor of the rate of each tax necessary to be levied by this council, and what part thereof is without and what part within the 10 mil tax limitation. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves Section 1 that the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and its certification be in the same or hereby accepted. Section 2 that there be and is hereby levied on the tax duplicate of said city, the rate of each tax necessary to be levied within and without the 10 mil limitation as attached heretofore. Section 3 that the clerk of this council be, and she is hereby directed, to certify a copy of this resolution to the county auditor of said county. And Section 4, this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith. What follows is the detail of our ballot-supported levies, of which we have 2.5 million, 2.5, 2,532,000 that is outside the 10 mil limitation, and 493,000 that is inside the 10 mil limitation. This is a recurring item, we do it each year, and this enables us to get our tax money, get our tax rates on the tax people gets to be issued soon.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Any questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2016-DD?
So moved.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Motion by Mr. Schweller to adopt Resolution 2016-DD, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor, seconded by Mrs. Middlestetter. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, city manager's report.
Yes, first item, recently, we had an instance where, I think we had a complaint about chickens, that somebody had chickens. The property owner, Mrs. Tomlinson, is actually here this evening, wanted to speak with council. The police have talked with her, it's a violation of our general offense code, as it's written right now. Effectively, when we got this, we talked to the property owner, gave a grace period, so to speak, so that she had the opportunity to come here and speak with council, and so to speak, so that she had the opportunity to come here and speak with council, and I know she's here this evening, and I'll let her speak, and then I'll give you some of the history for those of you who may or may not remember where, how we've been through this a few other times, so.
And Mrs. Tomlinson, so you'll need to say your name, and then you get five minutes, and they may ask questions then after that. So and your address.
Kim Tomlinson, 2007 South Linda Drive in Bellbrook. And? Here. Yeah.
And I guess, and this won't count on your time, was it, I think it's better to sort of, two years ago?
2013.
2013, we had the, we went through probably what you're getting ready to ask us. So we had, I think, I'm not sure who's, Nick, you probably were not here.
Everyone else was.
But I think everyone else was. So we're actually probably sort of up on chickens.
Right.
So.
Right, I have a few points, and maybe you can further read them. But I do have a small proposal prepared, and I'd like to read it if I may.
Absolutely.
My esteemed council members and fellow residents of Bellbrook, it is my desire to instigate a change in the laws of Bellbrook so that families may keep small flocks of chickens and hens specifically, since roosters are not required to produce eggs on their single-family properties. Our family in particular eats a lot of eggs because of our dietary requirements, and the cost of a dozen ethically-raised, free-range, organic-fed chicken eggs is about $4 a carton or more, depending on the current market rate. We consume about three or four dozen eggs per week on average, which is probably more than it would cost to maintain our own small flock, which is why we obtain them. Our family consumes them as entrees, but also eggs can be used to make our mayonnaise, which I make our own mayonnaise, sauces, condiments, salad dressings, baked goods, and they go into a lot of what we eat. I explained all of that to my husband, who just entered, before we acquired the flock, and I approached my immediate neighbors, who are the Hanks and Levin families, and their properties attached to ours, and asked them if, you know, if they minded. And they not only said that, no, they don't mind, but if they all had fenced yards like we do, they would want to have chickens too. So with their permission, and I sought out each of the breeds in our six-chicken flock, it's a very small flock, with purpose. I did a lot of research and specifically chose each of the breeds with hair for their attractiveness, which was my husband's requirement, and expected the quantity of eggs that they would produce. My small flock consists of six hens, which are all wonderful heritage breeds, which I lovingly researched and collected from as far as North Carolina, from a friend of mine who lives there. This is not the first time I've kept chickens. Years ago, I used to have a flock of 13. This is Gigi. And I'm very experienced in their care and management, so it's not something I went into lightly. Many people don't even know that a hen doesn't lay an egg every day, which is why we have six. Usually, it's recommended to have two per household, or per household member, in order to keep you in the adequate number of eggs. As you realize, backyard chickens is now sweeping the nation. It's not only becoming radical, it's becoming normal, because people want to know where their food comes from and whether or not it has a good quality of life. Local cities like Beaver Creek have proposals to amend their laws in order to accommodate the requests of their citizenry. Xenia already has legalized backyard chickens, and even the city of Dayton currently has a proposal to allow the residents to keep small flocks within city limits. Chickens have always been allowed in New York City, of all places, and they don't even have a limit to the number of chickens you can keep. I firmly believe that Bellbrook shouldn't be left behind in this venture. Sustainability really is our future. The other reason that I seek their legalization now is because Beaver Creek is paving the way, and it's my desire that we emulate them. In their council minutes that I have read extensively in the past several months, they remind us that six is the minimum number of chicks that you're allowed to purchase per Ohio law, and that's where that number comes from, as well as the two per household member. She doesn't quite count yet, she's just starting to eat. But they have a one-year provision in place, and that's really what I'm seeking. If, for some reason, this doesn't work out, at the end of the one year, they repeal the amendment, and no harm, no foul, has been completed, the, really, that's all I'm asking. If you let us join our neighbors in seeking the freedom to own laying hens, and I propose that, we do that. We must allow Bellbrook to fall behind in these times, and I appeal to you to please legalize backyard chickens and join me in the joys of chicken ownership.
Do you want to add anything else about what we discussed, how many, and three years ago?
About that.
It was, 2013 is when, July of 2013 is when I did a presentation. We also talked about it briefly, so we had another request last year, I don't think we had a formal hearing or anything, but it came before, or it was mentioned to council. So back in 2013, we talked about, really, with, it's a general offense within municipal code that only allows chickens if you're on agriculturally-zoned districts of parcels of five acres or more. So that's, you can have chickens in Bellbrook, but there may be one or two parcels in the whole city that would qualify under that, if that. So the proposal at that point, or the request, was to eliminate the restriction on chickens from that. And at the time, we talked about what, if we did that, what would the regulations look like to then permit it? A few years prior to that, we talked about beekeeping, we sort of went through this with beekeeping. We took, that was out of the definition, that was restricted, and then we put in regulations to, for beekeeping. So we went through, and I had just proposed certain things about registration, minimum lot sizes, where they would be placed in the rear yard, how many. One of the proposals was no more than four chickens per lot, no roosters, chicken coop required, things of that nature. So those were, if we were to allow it, we would have to, number one, remove it from the offense category, and then also, we'd have to put some regulations in place to allow it. And at that point, there were the seven council members, of which four of you are here, and I think it was generally there were, the majority were opposed to it, and that's why it never really moved forward beyond that.
At that time, was Denny in favor of chickens?
Denny was opposed, John Martin was opposed, Joe Ritzel was opposed, and Donna was opposed. That's my notes, were the four, and I think Mike and Bob were.
Yeah.
Up in the air.
Up in the air, not, right.
My turning point on it, going back then, I remember mine, mine isn't that I'm opposed to chickens, and depending on what lot sizes, you can go into all the discussions about, you know, if they smell, they attract, all the predators. My issue always boils down to one thing, it's already in the plat covenant, we can't change the plat covenant. Now, I don't know for sure if your house, I can't say that 100% sure, but if your house is anywhere, I'm sure there's some in the old village that aren't, and there's probably a couple here and there. But if it's in the plat covenant, we can't change that. So if we pass a law today, and then if someone complained, I assume is one of the reasons we know about, because I don't go looking for them, and I'm guessing there's other ones around. Actually, I have a pretty good idea, there are a few of them. But if they wanted to make you remove those, they could. Now, we wouldn't be involved, they can't tell us to go make you, but they have the legal right, under your plat covenant, to make you get rid of them. So my whole contention along the whole way was, it's going to be a nightmare if, you know, people were going to start, you know, potentially, you know, and some people like chickens, and I don't know the percentage, you'd have to make it up, I don't know. But that was the reason I backed down, and like, it's just going to create a nightmare.
What is the plat covenant?
Plat covenant is whenever your plat, whatever it's called, I live in Winter Haven too, on.
We're in Bellevue, she's in Bellevue Estates.
Bellevue Estate, now Bellevue may or may not, I don't know.
I've never seen it, and I've lived there 30 years.
So 30, yeah, well, mine was, let's see, mine was 40, let's see.
Those towns were about in the late 50s.
Mine was 1949, or, 49 years ago, 64 started. So, but even back then, because I used to do that for work, so I had to read them for utility stuff.
Right.
So that was my point.
But within that covenant, they've had restrictions.
They all say no farm animals. So almost everyone, I'm never going to ever say all, because you never know, there could be one developer at the time, but even the 50s too. But anyway. So Nick, questions or comments?
I'd like to appreciate your desire to want to, you know, raise chickens and feed your family with it. I'm just not sure that the city environment is the best place for that, for a lot of reasons. You know, for what the mayor says about plat, I know, and where I live in Fremont Ranch, I'm sure that there's a covenant in there, our subdivision's relatively new. You know, I've done some research on it myself, and you're right, there's a lot of communities moving that way, I just still think that Bellbrook is the place for that at this time. I mean, there's a lot of communities around us, township, obviously has lax regulations related to farms and chickens and things, but I don't think it's a place for Bellbrook.
I read up on it too, because I, I'm for sustainability and growing your own food. And I didn't, I knew something about the covenants, but like I said, I've never read Some of the things that I, because I was in fa, pretty much in favor of letting small flocks be there, but there's been some issues happening in towns that have allowed them, because chickens only lay for about two years. And the families then don't want to make chicken soup. So they turn the chickens loose, which becomes everybody's problem. Not that you would, but if it were a general ability, you know, law that they could, then we have loose chickens running around, and we have predators already, foxes and coyotes and raccoons in particular, that go after chickens. So that just makes them that much more attractive. So there have been some issues with other cities reporting these kinds of problems. So now I'm kind of, what do we do here? But. I feel like Bellbrook, and I don't mean to be elitist, but we are a higher classer of citizens here, we're not the kind of people that would do that sort of thing, and for the most part, I can see, I see that point. I know there are places where people are much less educated and much less caring about whatever is their responsibility, but I'm pretty sure that most of us here in Bellbrook are responsible, that own homes. We all, we're all very proud of our, of our little city that, and I don't, I would hope that they would be more like us, and not inclined to do that. Me personally, I'm not afraid to put anything in the stewpot that should be eaten. Yep. And I'll do it for others, if they need it, I'll offer. Well, I grew up raising chickens, so I know what's involved, and I rather imagine that people, after they find out what's really involved, probably won't continue doing it very often. I already raise rabbits, and we have processed them for meat as well. So that does not frighten me.
I think I was against them last time, and I guess I'm still against them. Not to say anything bad about sustainability, I get that, that makes sense to me. I'm concerned about the noise and the smell, the odor, and neighbors complaining about it. Since we voted last time, my sister-in-law actually got chickens, and while she intended to get all hens, she didn't. And so she ended up with two or three roosters, and one happens to crow every day at 1:30 in the afternoon. So, you know, so even though people would intend to get hens, they might end up with roosters, and I just don't think that we need extra problems and noise problems, so.
I have personally had three of them turn out to be roosters and found them homes on farms belonging to friends of mine, so that is a concern. If you purchase them older, it's less of a concern. There are breeds that are called sex links, there are red and black ones, there are also well-somers, there are many breeds that are born with specific traits to one gender or the other, and they don't come out any other way. It's obviously going to be a female or a male. And you can encourage people to go for those breeds, to prevent from that, from happening.
But then, but then I think our, I'm not sure what, what our code administrator, what her title is, but then she's.
Well, this is actually not, this is police.
This is police, but if we pass regulations, it would be under.
If we change something, it would move to the code.
To the zoning code, yeah.
Zoning.
Right. And that is also why we specifically request hens and not roosters, although they do make collars, of wonder of wonders, a friend of mine told me about them, and I said, no, I don't want to keep roosters, but we checked it out before I placed them. It's called a no-crow rooster collar, and it's a collar about this wide, and in order to crow, they have to inflate a part of their neck. And if they can't inflate that organ, they can't crow, and they just make a strange little coughing sound. So it is a humane way to render them crowless until you can find them a home.
But I guess my preference is to, is to not have chickens in the city. I think that probably more agricultural areas or places that have larger lots, it's probably more appropriate for chickens.
Chickens don't require a whole lot of space?
I'm just thinking about noise and smell and everything else that goes wrong with it.
And perception too, a little bit. Mr. Schweller?
I'm not as opposed to it as maybe some other people in council are, but I think you would probably take good care of them. I know we've had people come before the council before, and they pushed for ordinance changes and so forth and so on, and a lot of times, we find that we accommodate them, or somehow the state laws are changed to accommodate them, and then they become our problem.
Right.
And then we're the ones that have to go out and pick up these animals when they're outside the property, et cetera, and so on. So I think you would probably take good care of them, I'm not so sure as everybody else in the city would feel the same way about it.
Which has happened.
Yeah. And the other thing too, is that I would think that we'd want them very heavily regulated. And I don't know, you referred to the term "small flock," I don't know what you mean by that.
The limit I have currently is six. I have a fun picture that I printed from back in 1918, back when the wars were going on, and Uncle Sam recommends two per person in your household. But then again, you are in the city, so we want to set a reasonable limit. If you have six kids, that's going to be 12 chickens, plus however many parents in the house.
Yeah, I would certainly want to limit it to, I think, four, six was a good number that we had before, and that's not going to accommodate everybody. But it's been a changing issue, I think we have an opportunity here to learn from some of our other neighbors, to find out how this works out for them.
Right.
I'm curious about Beaver Creek, although they've got kind of more diverse breakup as far as the demographics than we do in the properties, a lot of bigger lots. I'm not sure how big your lot is specifically, but a lot of the lots we have are going to be very small, and probably, whatever we legislate, that might even be big enough to have a chicken.
You could require fencing, they do respect boundaries. They certainly can fly, but you can clip one wing so that they can't.
Well, we would, we would look to other cities to do what they've done on some of that stuff, but I think we would have it heavily regulated if we did pass anything, so.
And that's why I requested the one-year provision, which Beaver Creek is doing. They're actually having their first reading again tonight, the first one, they had even, it was three versus three, three against three, so they're repeating it tonight. And I can't wait to hear how that goes, I was talking to their clerk of courts today. But, yeah.
Is it something that, or should it be in another place, not in the, where's it now?
It's in the general offenses part of the code, that's where, that's where some of our, we'll be talking here in a little bit about dead trees, that's where that is also. There's a few things that are in there that are, I know Beaver Creek, it's, went through their planning board, so it must be in their zoning code, is where it is there. So I mean, it could go into your zoning code. Again, if we, if we wanted to regulate it, it might end up in the zoning code, or it might end up in a property maintenance type code or something like that.
Yeah.
But right now, it's just in the general offenses.
And it's always, it's always hard for us when someone complains, and, you know, so we're sort of stuck in the middle, unless we do change something like that. But then, of course, whoever, and this always happens, and it happened with one of the other issues with the VRBO, the rental thing, you're gonna, you're gonna end up with two or three, you're gonna have people in the room, and they're not going to agree. And my big issue is still the plat covenant, so.
We saw that with the fox then.
Yeah, the fox is a big one. So that didn't work out too well.
I would like to say that chickens don't pose a threat to anyone they don't come in contact with. We always wash our hands in case they are carrying something. But they don't roam if they're kept fenced, if they're properly housed and cared for. There is a very large black dog who is allowed to roam our neighborhood, I can't say the same for him, he threatens us frequently on our own property. But you wouldn't see that with chickens. And then we have the bird farm that's within the town or the city limits, and that's interesting with them, because those are from wild birds. They are birds that would have enormous territories in order to live in their wild habitats, but they're allowed here, and they're farmed here. It seems unfair that wild birds would have that limitation, but captive bred birds for centuries would not be allowed on, you know, normal-sized properties with more room to roam. I think we have .73 acres.
.73.
I could be off by a few points, but I'm pretty sure that's what our law. You're at least a half acre. Yes, we are at least a half acre. We have a very large corner property, we're lucky that way.
So tonight, there's one person missing, one person that we will be filling, John Martin's vacancy, I guess, yeah, at this point, like I said, we've, we've been through this a lot. One is, I'd sort of like to hear what happens to Beaver Creek, not that it'll probably change my mind. And I'd be curious, you can go to the courthouse to get your, and if you go and the recorder's off, he'll, he'll help you find it and print it out for you, the plat covenant.
Right.
And like I said, I can't tell he's going to be in there, because they're, they're all, each one's different. Winter Haven, there's one, two, three, four, five, they're all the same, but I know mine has it, but. So I'll, I will, I guess, just sort of go down and get the firmness where you guys are at, decide on how we would move forward. I guess if there's two guys not here, two people not here, and it was sort of even, then maybe wait till the next.
I guess that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, so Mark's looking for opinions, go.
I don't see making any changes right now.
Okay, so that's a no.
I'm still on the fence with it, so.
I'm still on the fence with it, so I'd be willing to look further.
So you'd be, so.
Watching what Beaver Creek does and do some more research on how it's-
Not doing anything right now, so that's sort of a happy ask.
Playing, how it's playing out in some of the other cities. And, and comparable sized lots. And it is interesting that New York City-
And I guess I don't know the complaint factor here. Is this a person that?
Well, the, the reality is right now, it's a-
It's against the law.
It's against the law. And so I guess that's, that's really the direction I'm looking for is, do you, do you want us to strictly enforce the law as it is on the books right now? In which case we would-
Or do you want to drag it out and decide?
We haven't strictly enforced it because we've, we've allowed-
Do you, do you want to wait for Beaver Creek or, and reprieve till we reconvene with two other people? But then Donna, I don't know where you're at. Are you a-
I mean, I think it makes sense to have everybody's opinion. I mean, I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
But I would, I mean.
So, so we will, we will continue to not enforce this for the time being?
Until, but we're gonna continue because one is to get other input. Two, I think, that would be three right there. Mike's on the fence too, unless I'm not putting-
No, that's right, that's right.
So that's potential four. I have no idea of the new person, but they're, they will be. So we need to see, you know, I, like I said, plaque covenants is gonna be tough for me to get over, but, so I'd probably be no.
Just to make, maybe put a finer point on the plaque covenant. So even if we pass something that said they're allowed-
We can't change plaque covenants.
They're allowed in the city, if her plaque covenant says that she can't have it, then she would-
But we wouldn't enforce it.
But we wouldn't enforce it, but someone could enforce it.
Would they do it or not? I don't know.
They'd have to do it on their own expense through the courts.
Yep.
Be a civil proceeding.
It'd be a civil proceeding through the courts. It's not criminal like this technically is.
And we probably ought to get that out of control.
Okay, so it will be a while because we'll have another meeting for a month. So they get a mini reprieve. I'm not guaranteeing anything.
It's wonderful. It's small victory.
But we will see now, you know, if we end up getting some specific complaints, then we probably have to deal with something.
Right.
So, and I don't know if we have or not. You okay with that, Mark?
I'm fine.
Okay. Thank you both for coming.
Thank you very much for your time today.
Okay.
So, sorry, I have other things, don't I?
Yes, you do.
Okay. On to our next topic, medical marijuana is, is the next topic on the agenda. So as, yeah, as, as everyone's read, the, the new state law has taken effect on medical marijuana. It took effect September 8th. The reality is, although it took effect, it has nothing to it right now, that there are three different state boards and agencies that have to do something to create rules before anyone can do anything with medical marijuana. I know there's at least a half dozen communities that have passed moratoria on medical marijuana, but I don't know that it's necessary quite at this point because no one has the rules. But the bottom line is there, there's gonna be growers and dispensaries, dispensaries. So the Department of Commerce has to be on growers. I can't imagine, so what we're talking about here, there's not gonna be anything within the city of Bel Brook that's gonna qualify as a grower because there's just not enough agricultural space to do it. Dispensaries though, that could happen.
That could be in it.
Anywhere, anytime. So we can, but the, the law that was adopted specifically allows cities to ban any of those, any and all of those if they choose to. So it's not even a, it's just, we can, we can pass regulation to ban that if we want to. What's happened is, you know, a lot of them passed moratorium to study it. I don't think we need to pass a moratorium because there's nothing that can happen in the short term, but I guess the, I'm looking for the opinion of people here, if they wanna follow the state law, let it happen where it happens, or if we want to ban them.
I, I think it's too, I, I don't need, personally, I need more information.
Yeah.
And you don't know how many information yet.
I don't think it's, I think it's-
You know, you don't know the requirements, how many feet of a school, how many, you know, all these.
There is some of that, but I mean, we're, and they're, they're gonna, they're gonna license the dispensaries based on population. So, you know, again, I don't know that we're really the, gonna be the epicenter of medical marijuana, but there's the chance.
Ever have. What about Mill Springs?
If, if it is, is it, is there anything wrong with it? I guess that's the other question.
The only concern I had, and I think I asked you through email about, hey, are we gonna do something about medical marijuana? Because I saw other communities doing that, is that if there aren't any regulations around it and there isn't setup, who can distribute and all that sort of stuff? Is someone going to distribute something and then they become grandfathered and then we can't deal with them in the regular course of whatever the state comes up with as how they're gonna regulate all this stuff?
From what I understand, no one can distribute until the state develops a regulation. They are completely controlling who, they're going to license everyone. So no one can just open up shop and say, oh, I'm gonna sell medical marijuana. It all has to be licensed by the Board of Pharmacy for the state of Ohio and they're gonna decide who can do it and who can't do it. So there's no-
So if we had someone who did that, we would say they're in violation of something.
Right. Yeah, they're selling illegally, yeah, I mean, they, they can't, they can't do that, yes, so they're-
I just didn't, I just didn't want to ask something to occur before the regulations were there to establish who could do it and who couldn't.
There, there's a couple, there's, I, this is the way that I thought, I actually haven't even talked to the municipal attorney, but a week or so ago, there was the article, Huber Heights is not doing anything in, in the meantime too. And their law director specifically said, until these regulations come in place, there's not really the need to do it.
Yeah.
There is a, the Ohio Municipal League is putting on a conference call here in the next week or so to talk about some of the legal issues. There's, there's really two sides to this. There's one is the drugs in the workplace avenue that you have to address, but then there's the city side in regulating it from a zoning perspective. So we'll continue to get information and make sure, but until those regulations come out, there's nothing that can happen.
Need more information. Elaine?
More information.
Donna?
Wait till we return.
Mike?
Stay the course, see what our bills does too.
I agree.
Okay, okay. Then on to dead trees is the next, next opera. I put some pictures, I have them actually for the screen here, but they didn't really show up very well.
So you looked at, are they dangerous?
So this goes back to, we've talked about this a couple of times. So these are, these two properties, one is on Lindley and one is on Bellmead. Don Biechek has been sending out letters, we've sent out all kinds of letters, but these properties in particular have received four letters. They received one last year, they received three this year, and they've never contacted us. They've never picked up the phone to say, hey, I'm gonna take care of it, or it's still living, don't touch my tree, whatever it is. So I, I think we, this again is in the general, this is actually in two different areas. We've been pursuing it under, sort of under the general offenses code, which says that you can do it. So we could continue down that road, particularly for these two properties, that they're, they are not in the public right of way, but they certainly are close enough to the public right of way that if they fall, and if and when they fall, they're going to land potentially in the street sidewalk and they could hurt somebody. As you can see in both of the pictures, you can see how close the, the road is there. So we could continue, we could actually have the police go out and give them a citation or at least a warning or something like that. We've not engaged them in this, we've just tried to go through the, more the property maintenance aspect. The other aspect is truly go property maintenance and declare these a nuisance, take it before the property review commission, or, and then we can, you know, once it's declared nuisance, we can go and cut them down and assess to the, the cost to the property owners. But that's, that's really where the dilemma is, so to speak.
It seems like we gotta make personal contact with them because they may be rental properties and I don't know if we're sending letters to like the LA-
We're, we're sending it to, the owners of the property and the, directly to the property and to the owners if it's differently. I believe both of these are owned, it could be a rental, you know, where, that the owner's not living there, even if it's not a formal rental, it could be a son or daughter that lives there or something like that. So, so we could, we could do that when, have the police make contact with them, go out, knock on their door, try to track down somebody and actually make sure that they are aware of this issue and, and do that. Again, try not to come, come across heavy handed, but that's one way to approach it.
Have the police talked to them yet?
No, they have not.
Just letters?
No, we've, we've just sent letters from the administrative side. But we could also go the property maintenance route and take them to the property review commission. Again, I don't, they haven't responded to anything yet. I'm not sure that that's going to be fruitful either.
I think in these two situations, you're gonna have to do something. I think the property review commission is the way to go, but anyhow, finding out if they're, we're missing a hole, I'm trying to contact them, that's what we do.
I agree.
I agree.
I would think it'd be a good opportunity for the cops to go give them a warning.
Okay.
And just let them know that this is in fact coming, you know, you probably heard about it, you've seen letters about it. We're not gonna move on this thing, just so you know what's going on.
Right.
The worst case is we'll cut them down and put them on the taxes.
Yes.
So.
Okay. We will continue down that road then. There were a total of 40s. We, we've had a very good response rate, a lot of people have taken care of it, or at least we've heard from them and they've said they're going to. So that, that's all we're really looking for is, these are an issue, if you're aware of it, we understand that it's fairly expensive to do, but just make sure you're aware of it and you're gonna take care of it.
And we're gonna have people, we're gonna be elderly or some other situations and then we, you know, but we gotta talk to them.
Right, they have to be, so. Okay. Plantation Trail Project is supposed to begin next Monday. That is replacing that culvert bridge between Bellmead and Hillcrest. Not really a high traffic area, we'll be in contact with the schools to make sure their buses know, but they, there's actually a place that they can turn around there. But that'll probably take about an eight, eight weeks to get that done, but that'll be, that's another OPWC project that is getting funded there. Last night at about 8:30, all Bel Brook residents received a boil advisory, even though it had nothing to do with the city of Bel Brook and the city of Bel Brook's water system. It was not very clear on the message. If you listen to it long enough, they may, sort of said something. I sent one out again this morning to clarify that, to make sure, but we, we had a lot of phone calls first thing this morning. We're working with Central Dispatch, the Green County Sanitary Engineer and Sugar Creek Township to make sure that doesn't happen again. They picked a point and they said, anyone within four miles of this point, send out a phone call. They sent out 5,700 phone calls, of which 2,900 were within the city of Bel Brook and had no impact on it whatsoever. So, so it's, it's, it's a situation that's easily solved with the technology that we have in place, but.
Why such a long period? I mean, the message came out about nine o'clock last night or something is when I got on my phone. And then I got the correction at what, nine o'clock this morning or something?
And they don't, they don't send out those-
It was like the bell bowers in between.
Well, because I had to, I had to come in here and manually type in the revised message and they don't send those messages out between 9:00 PM and 9:00 AM. So by the time it was done and they realized what it was, it was too late because they don't, they don't call after a certain hour or before a certain hour. So that's, that's really what it is. I'm sure you could probably override that in certain emergency situations, but typically they don't, they don't want that. And this didn't really rise to the life or death emergency situation. So we're working through that and hopefully we can eliminate in the first, but we are not under a boil advisory and have not been under a boil advisory. And then the last thing I have is, the next meeting is October 10th. We're not scheduled to have one on September 26th.
Any questions for us, the mayor? Seeing them, we'll move on to service.
No report tonight.
Safety, not here. Finance and audit, Mike?
Mayor, nothing to report this evening.
Community affairs, does have something this evening.
Yes, the, we met some while ago with Dana Duque to then recommend appointment, her appointment to serve on the Old Village Review Board with the term expiring December 31, 2017. This is to fill a vacancy that occurred on the board that we are putting her name in, is the recommendation for appointment.
Any questions or discussions? May I have a motion to appoint Ms. Durco to serve on the Village Review Board, term expiring 12/31/17?
I make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
End roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Mittelstetter to appoint Dana Duque to serve on the Village Review Board, term expires 12/31/17, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Is that it this evening or?
Yes.
Community affairs? Old business, we have nothing on the agenda. New business. City council recently received 12 applications for the vacant spot of John Martin. We had very, very, very good candidates. It was very, I was very, I think we all were very impressed. All in city council did interviews, I did miss one round of the interviews. So all of us were there to actually talk to the people with very specific questions that we asked all of them. And it was very impressive to see how many people applied and to the quality and the experience, the education that these people had. I would encourage any of those who interviewed to please, if you're not on a board, look at getting on one, one of our boards. It, it really was a very impressive group and Mrs. Dana was one of those people. New business, we will be appointing, we'll be making a motion to appoint Darryl McGill to city council to fill an unexpired term that expires on 12/31/19. I don't have his list of what he has been involved in, but he's been involved in attending meetings. It's a very extensive list, like some of the other applicants too. And we all believe very strongly that Darryl will add a, a nice new figure, face, he's his own person and he'll be a good addition to city council. So I guess first, does anyone have any other comments about the process, about Darryl or?
Well, that was good process. I was pleased with the people we had. They came down relatively prepared and they certainly were involved and want to be more involved in the city. And I, I think this is probably the most applicants we've ever had for anything like this, so I thought that was kind of reassuring.
Very reassuring.
Yes, I thought it was very fair, we did, with the process.
And so in addition to this, we will, in the motion, we will be appointing Mr. McGill to, he will take, be sworn in by me and take his position on 10/1/2016. He has also, I guess I'll need a separate motion. And what board was he on?
BZA.
BZA.
BZA. He will also be, once we approve his appointment, to take effect on 10/1 or October 1, 2016, we will then need to accept his resignation from the Board of Zoning Appeals. So the first motion will be to appoint Darryl McGill to city council to fill an unexpired term that expires on 12/31/2019. And he will be, his appointment date will be 10/1/2016. So that is the motion. May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
I second it.
And then roll call.
Motion by Mr. Schweller to appoint Darryl McGill to city council effective October 1, 2016, to fill the unexpired term that expires on 12/31/2019, seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?